Good evening. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg area school district. Board of directors' meetings and committee meetings are open to the public but are not public meetings. All school district residents who wish to make public comment should sign in prior to the start of the meeting and request to speak during citizens' participation. Public comment is welcome, and all issues will be referred to the appropriate board, committee, or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be made available by contacting the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. On a housekeeping note, the board held executive session prior to tonight's meeting relating to a legal matter. And personnel. Sorry. I forgot about that addition. Everybody's in attendance here this evening. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and sovereign republic, which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Just also, before we get to our first presenter, if there are anybody that just came for that presentation, I'm going to take a moment afterwards, and you can excuse yourself. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting unless you want to, but I am going to give you an opportunity if you want to exit then. So without much further, Franklin Township, Dr. Lappi, would you step forward for us? Hi.
Oh, okay, thanks. Should we go into Vanessa what? Here we go. Okay, first, we're going to introduce the group that's with me here tonight. Thanks for having us. And I'm Shelley. I'm the principal at Franklin Township. And I have Tara Johnson with me, third grade teacher, also a baton twirler. We have Ashley Kunkel, who's a reading specialist, and she is also was a field hockey coach. And Eli Brill, in case you haven't noticed, he's a second grade teacher and also is a unicyclist. So anyway, they're not going to do anything for you tonight unless you ask them to. But tonight, what we're going to share is we've done something different this year, something called Warrior Way Clubs that I learned from Dr. Schiefer's interview. So when we were interviewing her, you know, for the Lincoln principal position, I had heard her talking about something that they do at the end of, at the conclusion of their, sort of like their celebrations. I don't know what each school calls it, but for us, it's our Warrior Way Celebration. So this year, we tried something new and different, and so we had about 25 clubs. And each of our staff members, all of them had a particular club, I mean, ranging from, we can see, field hockey, baton, unicycle, and then we had simple things like tabletop games. Let me just look here. Creative pumpkin, patch party soccer, bracelet making, book club, all sorts of, like 25 different things that we've done. And it was just simply amazing. So before I go to the next slide, I'm going to have Ashley talk a little bit about her experience with the field hockey.
Hello. So I decided I was a field hockey player in high school and still have a passion for that. And so I decided, what better way to introduce kids to the game of field hockey, because it's not something that's very well-known. You can see, we did not play on a field. We played in our gym, which proved to be a little challenging with as quickly as the ball moves on a gym floor. But we did things like talking about how to hold a stick, that you can't use both sides with a stick in field hockey. We taught the kids how to do some simple passes, some dribbling, and we ended the day with playing red light, green light with the field hockey ball. They had a lot of fun. You can see it was a mixture of boys and girls, which was really exciting, and it was a great time.
Thanks, Ashley. And each club, depending on the significance or like the level of skill set that you might need, you would have like maybe just three through five for certain clubs, and some of them had K to five. Most of ours had K through five availability. And also, like, we had something like, we'll talk about in a minute, diamond painting. So that needed like two adults. So everything was really different. And you know what? I'm just thrilled about this because it really was fantastic. Like, we didn't really have any idea how it was going to turn out and how to organize it. We spent a lot of the beginning of the school year, several weeks, meeting regularly about how this could work out and how to get kids to sign up for certain things and to make sure that they, you know, would have multiple choices if something was already filled up, which unicycling filled up very fast. So, but anyway, so BJ's not here, but she wanted me to share a little bit about diamond painting, and she wanted you to know a little history of it. So I'm not going to read that, but if you're interested in that, I think you all have the presentation. But there is, it's very interesting how it came about, and she wanted me to share that with you. And I don't have, I made one as well, a pumpkin, and it was still getting sealed, so I didn't get to bring. Thanks, Dr. McFarley. I didn't get to bring mine, but maybe I'll bring it for the next one, so you can at least see that I did make one as well. All right, Eli, you're up, bud.
Hi. So when I found out we were doing clubs, I was very excited because I had recently impulse bought a bunch of very small unicycles on Facebook Marketplace. I just couldn't pass up the deal. I'd been kind of unicycling on and off for a long time, and I'm like, oh, this is perfect. So I got to bring them to school. And these guys, the kids who signed up for this, I would describe them all as very curious, okay? Like, this is, you kind of don't really know what to expect. It's like, you know, you could ride a bike, some of them could do a wheelie, but this is, for all of them, I guarantee you, the hardest thing they've ever tried. And I know exactly what it's like, because I did it. So it's kind of like, you know, you just, nobody can do it first try. Nobody can do it right off the bat. We had an hour.
Sounds like a challenge.
And what I liked about this was that at the end of this hour, I didn't have any kids who could ride the unicycle. None of them could actually do it. A couple of kids were getting better at it, you know, they were making the smallest little increments of progress, and everybody left just totally fired up. Like, you would have thought they were riding laps around the school. They were just like, really excited. But yeah, it was a ton of fun, and I got to put some miles on those unicycles.
All right, so we also had pumpkin paint. You can see the picture there, and with Mrs. Robinson, Mr. Hoag did construction crew, which was also awesome, because we had one of our families donate all the lumber. And it was awesome, because we're trying to build something also for outside of our courtyard. So we're going to get like some raised beds and stuff. So they're going to continue working on this for the, we'll do this three more times. And we haven't decided how we'll organize the second one, if it's like you went, you'd go to the same club again, or if you choose different ones. I don't know if Mr. Hoag's going to want other people building on what they've started or not, but you might want the same crew coming back with you, because they've already practiced. But anyway, and then we have Janay Walkin, she went on a nature walk. That's the picture at the bottom. So like I said, we've had creative club, bracelet making, I mean, there's, Vanessa, thanks so much for coming out and taking all those pictures. So there's hundreds more pictures we could share, but we just wanted to kind of give you a glimpse into the day, and it was just so fun. And this is some of the things our kids had to say about the experience. So I'll leave it there for just a few seconds, so you can get a glimpse into their day. And then we had our, this is just some quotes from our Warrior Way Club leaders. You know, you can just see that it was just, it was so well-received, like, people were just blown away. And we, like I said, none of us knew what to expect, because I had a feeling it would be like organized chaos. And it was just so much fun, and the kids were talking about it for days. They still are, wondering when the next one is. And again, you have this, so I won't, you know, belabor the point, but it was just really well-received, and everybody was all in. They were involved. As a reading specialist, is that enough time to leave that up there? Okay, let's move that on. And there, and then Vanessa, in her just amazing talent, she put all of our pictures into the FTE at the end, so. At this time, we'll take some questions, and if there is a volunteer who would like to try the unicycle, we have one right here for you.
Dr. Lappi, do the kids at the school, actually, with all the different variety that you have, do they have choice, for the most part, is like, if they don't get their first choice, they get to the second?
Yeah, they came down with their, did we decide on three or five? I forget. They came down with a post of five choices, and the, there were large sticky notes all around like a certain section, and it had the name of the club and, you know, who was leading it. And so we had enough dots, if it was like a K to five, we'd have enough dots that signified, and we had a key that signified, okay, we can have this many K to three, and then this many, four, five, so that it wouldn't fill up, and then you could, we could have a variety of kids from different grade levels. And I think everybody got at least one of their five choices.
How often do the clubs meet at Franklin Elementary?
Well, this was our first one. So we're going to do it three more times. We'll do, we have our quarterly Warrior Way Celebrations, and so we'll have this following it for the hour after that each time. So we'll do one in, another one in January, and then March, and then the end of the year.
Just one or two more quick questions or comments, and then a request. The November newsletter that I just read from Franklin Elementary and all the newsletters, I just want to thank you for sharing that with us and how informative that is, and I think it's a great message there for the parents as well. Keep up the good work with that. I also want to say, every time I'm there and I see, you know, people that come in or guests or whatever, it's just a really welcoming atmosphere and environment, really a family atmosphere out there, and you all are commended for creating that. That doesn't happen by accident. It happens by design, I'm sure. I think it's great that the kids are really physically active here in most of these activities, which is outstanding. And I personally, if President Hesseger would be willing, I would love to see, for the first time ever in a school board meeting, a unicycle demonstration by Eli.
I told you it was a possibility. I said to him, I won't ask you, I said, I can't guarantee that nobody's not going to ask.
I did wear my unicycle outfit, so. Look at this.
Eli won't tell you this, but he also is in, and if I get this wrong, please correct me, but it's a video game of some sort, right? A cartoon character?
Yeah, Street Uni X.
Yeah, he's a character in it on a.
Could you put Dr. Lappi on that and show us how you showed the kids to do their thing, so we could see how you instructed them?
In one of those pictures, I'm like hanging to the side of the pillar outside Franklin, not moving from it, but I couldn't get very far. I'm recovering from shoulder surgery, okay?
You guys are rock stars. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are we good?
Yes. Thank you. And again, again, please, you're not going to hurt our feelings. You guys have a long day. You can stay or you can go. So moving along here, there, I'm being told there is no citizens' participation this evening. That stands, that stands correct, right? Good. Okay. Next is our routine approvals. Five point one, the agenda. Five point two, regular board minutes, October 6, 2025. Five point three, regular board minutes, October 20, 2025. Five point four, the, is an approval of settlement agreement. And five point five is the human resources recommendations. I'd like to do all of those in one lump. Some may have a motion for five point one through five point five.
Simmude.
Second.
Question on a motion. Hearing non-roll call. Tim?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Items for board action. Six point one, consolidation of the business management and administration program offerings. This was a part of an informational item last, at our last meeting two weeks ago, and I believe that our high school principal is present if there is a question related to this item. So may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Question on a motion. Kathleen?
I don't have a question, but Mr. Lusk, I want to say thank you for the data that you provided.
Any additional questions? Hearing non-roll call. Ryan?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Al? Michelle?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Six point two, once again, is another item that was a part of an informational item at last, last two weeks ago. It's the administration building renovations, revised project scope slash budget. May I have a motion?
Simmude. Second.
Question on a motion.
Whoop, Mr. President. Just to reiterate, Josh, could you just let us know, just a little review of this again, and also if you could tell us what you thought that the design stuff might cost for the designers?
So a quick recap, the original scope, design scope and budget was 4.6 million, as was approved back in May. And then we got our estimates in, and the scope that we intended on designing to, which was renovation of the entire building, HVAC-related items, as well as fitting out the third-floor space for an IT department, came in at about 6.8 million. So we came up with a couple of different options to make what we felt was probably better use of funds and space, and came up with adding on an addition, increasing the footprint of the building, to put a boardroom additional on just beyond the exterior wall over here behind the screen, and then also designing in what would essentially be an ad alternate when we bid the project, would be a second floor for future expansion above the first-floor addition. That would be a total of 7.5 million. So that's the overview of the scope. The administrative recommendation is to design up to the $7.5 million estimate, and then we could obviously have that as an ad alternate, the second floor, and then hopefully we would have funding if we got good, good numbers in. That's the administrative recommendation. And again, the ask tonight is to take action on authorizing us to revise the scope to design to, not to award anything. We would go through the same process that we did with the team room. We would go out for bid, we'd get the bids back in, and then we put those forth for information, then ultimate action, and then the board could ultimately decide what scope they wanted to award. So in a nutshell, that's the, the scope and the path forward. Now, you asked about the design fee. So the design fee, the way the contract structure, which is a typical design fee structure, is Barton Associates in total, which would pay them as well as their subconsultants, they would get 6.5% of what the validated bids are. So, or if we don't go out to bid, then their estimates would prevail in terms of what the probable construction cost would be. So let's just say we were to get bids in for 7.5 million, they would get 6.5% of the $7.5 million bids.
So when we approved the original Barton Engineering to do the design contract back in May for 4.6 million, so that's already been approved, so we would be paying an additional percentage between the 4.6 and the 7 point?
That's correct. Yeah, you're correct.
And if I'm correct, Josh, that this addition would be basically the same size as this exact footprint we're in now beside us, correct?
Roughly, yes. Yeah. Yeah, and then this space here would become the IT department, because we wouldn't be, in that scenario, we would not be fitting the third floor out. That would just remain attic space and storage for everything that, or archives, if you will, that we have up there now. And this space here would become mainly the IT space, and there'd be a couple swing spaces for offices, there'd be some conference room space as well.
And then the addition would then be the new school board?
Correct. Yep.
Well, now, we would be authorizing, what, somewhere in the area, $30,000? If this board would vote this evening to send us out to bid, to revise this, the difference between what we've already approved and what the price is now, we owe that difference, correct?
We would for design fees, yes. So at 7.5 million, if we were to authorize them to design up to 7.5 million, which would be the second floor above the first-floor addition, that's $487,500, that's 6.5%. If my math is correct. I think it was 299 for design fees for, I'm sorry, construction cost was 4.1 million, total budget was 4.6, including the design fees. Sorry, Kenny.
No, that's fine. I think you, I think I, I think you answered my question, but I got, and this may not be a question for you, maybe for Belinda. What is, I don't want to use the word urgency, but why, what forces this board to take action on this item when this board's going to look entirely different in a month? Are we losing something financially? Or, I mean, what's happening that, if this board, why aren't we not letting this for a new board to discuss in December? Is there a financial reason for that? Because new board could come in here, in theory, not like the proposal or want a change of that, and we've already committed district funds to this, to this program or to this project. And they could say no, which is fine, those funds are gone. I'm just, I haven't heard the last informational item or this one, and I raised the same point. Why is this here today opposed to not in December, when there's five new board members sitting here? They may have a totally different idea. I may like the project, but they may not.
I think it's all planning timeframe of when to go out to bids, when to construct the bids and so forth, as well as use the remaining bond money that we have.
Right. But if we are delayed by a month, and this is an item that the new board can take a look at, however that's structured, what is the damage done to the district? Financially, in any way? Do we lose something off the bonds? I don't, I don't know.
Well, so one of the, I understand what you're asking, given the fact that it's like this is happening now and that is only a month away, but I want to blow out that idea a little bit more, to just think about the way that this board always functions. Every two years, there's a change that happens, and we plan our capital projects and our projects for updating facilities five years plus out. So if we're always keeping that in mind, then there's always a possibility of pushing back the timeline to wait for a restructuring of a board, which means that then that narrows down really, really small windows of where we can take action to fulfill the needs of the district, right? So that is something to consider sometimes. I guess the question here is, you know, I imagine that not voting on this tonight would push the ability to go out for, it's just delaying your ability to act on bids, is what I remember you talking about last meeting. So, you know, I think everyone can, can operate with the information we have about whether or not this is a project we are looking to invest in moving forward. It sounds like the Finance and Facilities Committee was working on that as well and is putting this forth as a recommendation in addition to administration. So I appreciate that thinking a little bit, Kenny, but I also think that if that's always the way we approach any decision we're making, then every two years, you're going to be able to say, it's going to change. Do you know what I mean? Half of this board will still be here.
Alice, I do appreciate that, but I'm, there's five, this board is changing for the majority. That does not happen every two years. It's rare that it even happens every four years, where we're having five people up for election, and we are talking about seven-plus million dollars. And I'm just looking out, if I'm walking in on a new board, I'm handing them this. They can say they like it and move forward with it, or they can say they don't like it, and there's the 30,000 or whatever that price tag is, go on.
So why don't we just make a motion to table it?
Well, so to be clear, every four years, unless something happens with a special election, yes, every four years, five people will be up for election. That is the way. It's a five and a four split. I think we can probably vote on it, and if it's not something that gets voted through, then that is effectively, well, maybe it's not tabling it, I don't know. I find that rationale difficult, as I would rather help move a project forward and have the next board decide whether that is something they would like to continue working on.
No, I appreciate that.
Mr. President, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. I, I agree with you. I have a greater concern, that five months ago, the board approved up to 4.6 million, and here we are, five months later, and we're looking at adding 3.1 million to that. That's a real concern for me, and I think that warrants some greater discussion, and we started that discussion two weeks ago. But coming off the heels of committing to the teams room like we did, this seems like a pretty big ask without, I think, having had enough discussion.
I would, I would agree, Kathleen, and I would also, I mean, based on some of the information that I was provided, like, needs, like, needing this room specifically for like election days and preparations and stuff like that, I mean, I just, I would echo Kenny's question, like, what's, what's the urgency? And the same with the IT stuff, like, I understand that it's in the basement, which is not the most ideal conditions, but there are, there are things in, that you can purchase to help with climate control, and I would think that with technology, we're going more and more to cloud-based stuff, and our IT footprint should be shrinking, not growing. Those are just some concerns I have.
Can I, can I ask Tim for maybe a little bit of a, like, window into what has been discussed in the Finance and Facilities Committee in regards to this project? It's been on, it's on the list for a while. When I read something that talks about required electrical upgrades and HVAC, that is not something that I like waiting on if it's needed, because we have had situations where buildings, you know, if HVAC goes out and you have kids in a building, like, that's not, that's not a fun thing to play around with.
No, I mean, that's what started the whole, the whole plan, was the HVAC system here, and Josh can alliterate when I'm done here, but the AC in this place is hit or miss, I guess, from what I hear, one room could be cold, one room could be hot, depending on where you're at, so the heating system needed, and that's what started, just like every other HVAC project here, the system's old. Started with that, and then, of course, when you do that, while you have everything out, you're like, okay, well, we need to run this wire, that wire, these lights, all that becomes into a plan. And then I guess the idea come up to, they needed more space, thought about using the attic, getting the IT stuff out of the basement, where all the moisture and everything is, and moving upstairs. Then that became more of an expense than what they originally thought it was going to be, at 4. whatever million. And so they tried to revamp, come up with a plan, and I don't know, Josh, I know the, the addition out here with the second floor was 7.5, but what is it without the second floor addition?
6.5.
6.5, so an extra million. So, I mean, it was, you know, a million dollars cheaper to put the addition on, so I get where they're going with that. But my, that, that's what led to us to here. Now, what we decide as a board is what we decide, but that's, I know the HVAC was a priority. And I did have a question for Belinda. How much, since we approved that 4.2, not to go over and get that first bid out there, how much are we now committed to having to pay to Barton? Where are we at right now? You know, if we didn't go any further today, how much do we committed to pay out to them?
I would say that we are committed to pay out to them, the 4.6 million of the 6.5%.
So $276,000.
Correct.
And if we do the rest of, we would owe another $174,000.
Correct.
I'm not.
And I just want to share that the admin building was to be, and if many of you were here, not here, or many of you maybe remember or not, the admin building was to be addressed when we were doing James Getty and Lincoln, and it was taken off the plate at that time. And so the admin building has always been on the agenda with the FNF to address HVAC work, as well as the importance of getting technology out of the basement with the recent flooding that we had down there. If technology goes down, the technology's down for the entire district. So that's the secondary concern, not so much the addition of the boardroom, but in learning through this whole process, it was more feasible to add on and try to outfit the attic, when in fact you needed two separate attached easements, stairwell into the facility, which would have been a heckuva lot more money, and you were losing more space by outfitting the attic because of the knee walls that needed to be presented. So it was the option that the committee looked at, to add on providing the necessary space and giving the space for technology to be out of the basement into the main level, is really just the backbone of where, where we are at and why we are studying this at this particular point in time. point in time.
Belinda, thanks for adding that. I've been on the board for quite some time. I try to attend Finance and Facilities meetings. This is, this has been on the agenda and off the agenda, and back on the agenda on several occasions. It's been vetted pretty far. It's not a fly-by-night, all of a sudden, we're looking to do this. Now, some of the expansions of this, and I don't have a strong feeling if we hold off a month or two, or whatever, and educate whoever else is new that's going to be on the board, but I do think it's something that absolutely, we need to take a strong look at it and get it, and bring this admin building up to contemporary standards. I would, I would be interested if Dr. Matzer, not to put you on the spot, but I'd love to have, this is your work home, so I know you have some pretty strong thoughts about this. I'd be interested to hear your recommendations for us as well.
Well, the addition, again, it provides, it's going to provide more space for us. Like, right now, we have very little conference space in this building at all, if needed. We do also have some, like, our school psychologists, some other people that have offices in the buildings, where we might be able to bring those offices back here to the admin building and have them, give them a home base here, and free up some spaces out in the buildings for other purposes. I know we've talked about bringing some of our special ed classrooms back, so we may have some extra space to be able to do that. The other part of the addition that we talked about, one of the advantages of it is for nights like tonight for board meetings, or for, you know, elections, I know we talked about that, would have a separate entrance and exit right into that room, so we wouldn't have, we wouldn't necessarily have to have anyone from the public coming into the actual admin building into this space, and they would just be able to go right in and out of that. So, that provided a lot of different advantages for us to do the addition.
And one, I think, Josh, and maybe you can give me a educated guess, so to speak, we proposed to do this when we did James Geddes', and now we're proposing it now. How much has this cost of this project, you think, has went up from, if we'd have done it at James Geddes', to doing it now?
Good question.
Which comes from kicking the can down the road sometimes.
It's, I believe, about 800,000. About 800,000.
Thank you.
Well, the board did commit to do this. We've never not, this board as a whole, voted for the HVAC system. Two weeks ago, it was presented to us with this addition. And I'm just simply asking, what's the difference between now and a month from now? That's all. It's a legitimate question. Tell me we're losing something. Tell me it's going to cost us something.
What does waiting a month do for the timeline? Because we've asked that budget question, I guess that's less of the issue, does that cause an issue for working with the people that we've, we want to go out to bid with?
Relative to the timeline of working in the building, it doesn't make that much of a difference, but the longer we wait, you know, the more inflation's going to get us, and the more it's going to cost. Now, another 30 days, not a big deal. If we punt it two years, like we did last time, and because we couldn't fit it into the Getty-Lincoln budget at the time, then obviously, we're, you know, looking at a significant increase. But to let it go to the next board timewise for construction, I can't speak to funding, but to construction, that's not the end of the world.
Okay, thank you.
No additional questions, but I would like to make a motion to table 6.2.
This is Lee, sorry, over here.
I'm sorry.
And before you finish that motion, I would just caution, because tabling a motion means you carry, you pick it up at the next business meeting, and it's also, I would say, probably a table within this governing board, and to the point of, like, people changing, it would be on table for the same, for a different board in a month, or, you know what I mean? Because you wouldn't be able to table it, I guess, until the second, but it's a different governing body that's tabling it.
You can motion to table indefinitely, which could be brought back up at some other random time.
And as, okay, yes, and you're, okay.
So, I make a motion to table 6.2 indefinitely.
Can I, can I hear the ration, can I hear the rest of that thought before?
I mean, it's only that normal, you can table it indefinitely, you are tabling it, and it's going to be a different board that's picking it up, that's sort of the essence of this. I would otherwise vote it down and bring it back up again, but if you want to table it, it's fine, but it's being tabled amid people that are not going to be the same. And a new board in December 2nd will be different than maybe December 15th, but indefinitely makes sense, but I'm just pointing out, one governing body tabling it for another governing body.
Or we can, we can put it up for a vote, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
Well, there's no second. I mean, I'll go to roll call if there's no other questions.
We have seconded this.
Not the table, though.
I withdraw my motion to table.
Correct. The original motion is on the table. The motion to table has not...
It's withdrawn, 6.2, I withdraw it, so it's gone.
Any additional questions? Roll call. Tim?
Thanks.
It's the order of the draw.
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Al?
Yes.
Kathleen?
No.
Alice?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Jeremy?
No.
Ryan?
No.
And I vote no. The motion, it did not carry.
So, can I just ask the question now, then, with the understanding that, like, that can be something that can come back for the new board? Because I think the intention here was that the no's were coming from a space of not wanting to vote on behalf of a board that is changing in a month. But I think that needs to be said, because I, you know, otherwise, I'm not sure how that works in terms of what's put on.
Right, so whoever's sitting in my seat in December and has the agenda, they'll bring it to, they'll bring it the way it always happens, and they'll go back on the agenda if the administration wants to continue to recommend that, and a new board can vote however they want to vote.
Thank you, I think that's important to say, Ellen. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Dr. Matzer, I would just say, as we have some turnover on the board, as best we can with the new board members, if we can educate them and bring them up to speed on this, so that they're not put in a position where they're making votes without, you know, educated thoughts and so on, as best you can.
When it comes up, we'll have Josh come back and do his presentation one more time.
Two years running, Josh. There are no informational items, board committee reports. Anybody?
Just a real quick one, President Hassinger, my understanding is, they are close to a state budget. I know a lot of schools that aren't in as good a condition as we are financially, or have already looked into loans and all kinds of other creative ways to finance their schools. I'm hearing that the big block that is forcing this thing to go so long has a lot to do with the funding and making a base payment for cyber charter schools. As you may or may not know, I have a personal issue against them. I think we're being overcharged egregiously, and I hope they hold the line on that, and that we get some good news that's going to save us, hopefully, some significant dollars. But my understanding is, they are very, very close, within the next week or two, that we are going to have a state budget. That's the word on the street, and I think it's maybe a good reason why it's been held up so long, that they're holding the line and trying to push a reasonable number, a flat fee, for what public schools have to pay for these cyber charters. Thank you.
No additional. Our last item on our program reports, Dr. McFarland.
Good evening. I'd like to share a brief update to our board and community regarding our fall Title I and Parent and Family Engagement events at our elementary buildings. Franklin Township held their Title I event on Thursday, October 9th at 5:30. This event was incredibly well-attended, with over 200 students, parents, providers, and staff in attendance. The weather for this event was beautiful outside, which was a good thing, because the night started with a fun run from 5:30 to 6:00, where students received colorful You Matter bracelets after completing each of their laps. Following that, the Warriors had opportunity to attend a book fair, participate in craft and STEM activities, along with a Warrior Obstacle Course in the gym. There was also, a family provided delicious apples for all of those in attendance as well. This event also doubled as a PTO fundraiser, where families could donate a flat rate, 100% of that went back to the kids, and Dr. Lappi noted that this is one of the best-attended family nights at Franklin Township. James Geddes held their Parent and Family Engagement Night, and this was only for K and 1, on October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:00. Reading specialists led sessions where families were provided information about hands-on literacy activities, which they can do and help their children at home. Several tips and tools for supporting early reading skills were shared, demonstrated, reviewed. In addition, EL teacher was available to answer questions and provide similar information. Light snacks were also the highlight of the evening, and several community partners were on hand, including SCAP, United Way, Head Start, which provided information and various giveaways and support for numerous families that were there, and approximately 20 families were represented at this event as well. Last but not least, Lincoln Elementary School held their event on Thursday, October 9th at 6 o'clock, entitled "Wild About Reading." It was a huge success, with just over 100 families who signed up, while 70 families were able to attend that evening, which focused on building a love of reading. Students and their families participated in a variety of engaging animal-themed literacy activities, including listening to a read aloud, writing about animals, adopting a pet and writing about it, selecting free books to take home, and playing various animal-themed games. There was also several community partners attending that event as well. Members from the Strawberry Hill Nature Preserve, SCAP, United Way, Head Start, and Adams County Library provided various resources and support to our families throughout that evening. It was a wonderful night of learning, connection, and community partnerships. Something we've been focused on is our engagement and the community outreach, and as you hear these types of numbers, that were families, 100 families, 70 families, so obviously, there was, you know, two, three, four, and sometimes up to five and six, representing each one of those. I'd like to thank our numerous families for taking time out of their busy schedules to attend those fall events, as well as a big thank you to our staff at our elementary buildings and community providers for planning and supporting such valuable engagement opportunities for our students and families. I, for one, am very impressed with the attendance and the opportunities at all of these events, and really look forward to how we can build upon this momentum in our community and schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. McFarland, first of all, a big thank you for following up on this. I know when Alice and I participated in the comprehensive plan, this was one of the big goals that we had with our large representative group, and so I appreciate the follow-up, and congratulations on the turnout for this. Historically, many districts have a lot of trouble getting people to come out and so on. What was the secret sauce of getting so many people motivated to come out and participate?
I really can't say. I can say there was a lot of effort from our schools, from the Sanders over here, getting the word out, and a lot of work on our teachers, just publicizing this in their classroom in the schools. I was actually on a Zoom meeting, and I heard Dr. Lappi on the announcements mentioning this as well. So, just getting the word out and making it accessible to families. We've done some things with Times, as well as brought in some various community supports as well, so I think just the continuation of the word getting out for families.
It's great to have, many times, strategic plans, comprehensive plans become, you know, dust sitting on a shelf and a binder. This is making that comprehensive plan a living, working document, and you following up and giving us updates is much appreciated. Thank you.
Sure, and just to echo that, too, based on my experiences, these numbers and families that were able to come out to this event, it's definitely skyrocketing from previous years.
Awesome. Dr. Matzer?
Yeah, I just have a few calendar items, just want to discuss. October 24th, last week, was the end of our first marking period. It's hard to believe that we're already a quarter of the way through the school year, but we are. That leads us to parent-teacher conferences. K through 8 parent-teacher conferences are happening at the end of this week. We have no school on Friday for our students, but again, K through 8 parent-teacher conferences will be November 6th and 7th. Tomorrow, we already talked about, is Election Day, our boardroom's going to be pretty busy, be active tomorrow for Election Day, and being new to our positions, one of the things I talked about when I interviewed for this job, Dr. McFarland and I, over the last couple weeks, held our first two superintendent meet and greets for the public. We did an elementary, one for secondary families, one for elementary families. I will admit that the attendance was not exactly what we were hoping for, but we are not going to be discouraged by that. We're going to continue to hold meet and greets open to the public for anyone in the community to come, just chat with us, ask some questions. We'll probably look to do another one in a couple of months. That's all.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be November 17th, 7 o'clock here in the boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? We are stand adjourned.